Welcome, I'd like to call to order the January 7th City Council Study Session for January 7th, 2020. The time is 3:07. Please say here or I when after I call your name, Councilmember Abersole.
Here.
Councilmember Vranich. Okay, you had it a minute ago when you put.
There you go. Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good. Councilmember Heinz.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Woo.
Here.
Great, this is Mayor Kuhn, and we will get back to Councilmember Dinson who's trying to get on. We also have City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
City Clerk Molly Townsley.
Here.
Thank you. Assistant City Clerk Josh Decker.
Here.
Great, and as our guest speakers, we have MRSC Executive Director Tracy Burrows.
Here.
Thank you. And WCMA ICMA Senior Advisor Andrew Nets. Sorry, I said that wrong.
Naitis.
Naitis. Welcome. We also have our Attorney Daniel Kenny. Daniel, you there?
Here, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, I'll work on that while I'm muted.
Okay, and then Josh just will announce Robin when she gets on, so just be looking for anyone.
Looks like we've we've lost Councilmember Markley temporarily, it looks like too. She's back.
Okay, sounds great. And I believe that's all. So thank you all for coming. This is agenda is City Forms of Government by a MRSC presentation. With that, I'll turn it over to Tracy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kuhn, and thank you to the council for inviting us here, for inviting Andrew and I here. We're really pleased to be here, and I just want to give a shout out to Josh, who did a really nice job coordinating with us and had everything squared away months in advance, so, and then right up leading to the this meeting today.
Great. One brief moment, I'd like to announce also Councilmember Dinson. Just say here, we just did a roll call, wait for you.
I am here, and I'm going to try and get on with my computer, but at least I'm on my phone at the moment. Sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tracy, thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to briefly introduce myself, and Andrew will do the same, and then we'll dive into the presentation. I am the Executive Director of the Municipal Research and Services Center, MRSC, and I hope you've all taken advantage of our services. We serve cities and counties throughout Washington, and I have been the Executive Director for about 10 years. And prior to that, worked in local government, primarily with the cities of Kirkland and Seattle. And so I have experience with both the city manager form of government and worked in the city manager's office in Kirkland and in the mayor council form of the strong mayor form in Seattle and worked very closely with the mayor on transportation issues there. So that's just a little bit about my background. And Andrew, you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Andrew Naitis. I recently retired after about 40 years in local government, including about 28 years as a senior management officer in different forms of government. So I was the Sumner City Administrator under a mayor council former government for about five and a half years. I was the City of Lakewood City Manager for eight years under a council manager former government. I've also been in county government as the Deputy County Executive of Pierce County for eight years. And most recently, I spent seven years as the first Executive Director of a regional public safety agency, Southtown 901, serving police and fire, including Gig Harbor Police and Gig Harbor Fire, so I'm pleased to be here.
Thank you. Other knowledge.
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen, and we're going to start with a PowerPoint presentation. And then we will, Andrew's going to talk a little bit about his experience and perspectives. And then we'll answer questions, and if you have questions along the way, feel free to interrupt. So everybody can see the screen? Okay, just a little bit about MRSC in terms of this particular issue. MRSC is an independent nonprofit organization, and we serve cities and counties throughout the state with technical assistance, guidance, advice, legal advice, and training on a range of issues, a wide range of issues. We're trusted and objective in our approach, and we have no particularly, I mean, we serve all all forms of government, and we have no particular preference for any, or we work with successful cities that have mayor council forms of government, successful cities that have council manager form of government. So I'm really here to talk to you about the different forms within the state and and how, if you were to go through a transition, how the time, how that would work, what are the mechanics of that? In choosing a form of government, it's really not an issue of a city has more power or authority or one with one or the other. You have, for example, no more taxing authority under one form or the other. So but within that that bucket of powers and authorities that cities have, and you're a code city, so the code cities have, the difference is really how that those roles and responsibilities are distributed. And so who holds them, and we'll go into that in more specifics as we go through the presentation. And you'll see how particular roles and responsibilities shift with each distinct form of government. So this chart kind of shows on the left side the executive powers and authorities, so that would be under a mayor council form of government, the mayor. And on the right-hand side, the legislative roles and responsibilities of the city council in this in this instance. And then in the middle, there are lots of powers and authorities there that that vary can vary by form. They do vary by form of government. They can also vary depending on the specifics of your municipal code in some instances, and for example, on appointments to boards and commissions, you may have something in particular in your municipal code that dictates that, or just by custom. For example, the spokesperson can vary, but but so as we go through the presentation, you'll see how these forms, these authorities that are in the middle column can shift or do shift with the different forms of government.
So Tracy, there is a council member that has a question. Do you want to have questions go? Okay, so maybe that way they're pertaining to this slide, maybe Councilmember Vranich has his hand up.
I was just wondering, who is if who is watching if there's, I don't have a question yet, but is this progresses if are are you watching the raise hands or is Ms. Burrows watching it? Or do we just jump in or what's the?
Um, I don't mind watching it so that she can then stick to her PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you.
That would be great. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Okay, so here is the council manager form of government. And so there are 54 cities in the state of Washington that have this form of government. There this form is most common in mid-sized, which I would consider Gig Harbor sort of on the smaller end of midsize to larger, but the smallest city that has a city manager is the city of Carnation, which has about a little over 2,000 population. It's more common in cities that are larger than that. So here the voters elect the council, and then the council appoints the city manager who runs the day-to-day operations of the city, hires and fires department heads. And is generally, as you'll see in the next slide, has has the role of being the the chief administrator of of the city. And so with this form of government, on the left, the executive powers are associated with the city manager. So the city manager often has the role of spokesperson for the city, makes proposals to the council. The city manager is responsible for developing the city budget and proposing it to the city council, who reviews it, and then can make changes and adopt it. City manager administers the day-to-day operations and appoints and dismisses employees. They're under this form of government, whereas typically under a mayor, well, under the mayor council form of government, the mayor has veto power. The city manager does not have any veto power. The city manager does not vote on any proposals. So that's a difference from the the mayor council form of government in terms of the veto power. So the so what shifts in the in this form of government is while the 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 city manager is going to come forward with proposals for the city council to consider, it's really the city council that sets the agenda, that directs the city manager as to which policies to pursue, or if they have an agenda priority, they would direct the city manager to pursue that. There's a chair of the council. The council selects the city manager. The council would be responsible for making appointments to boards and commissions, confirmation of key appointed positions, although that is less of an issue because it's the city manager that appoints department heads and so forth. And the city council establishes contracting and spending authority, although they typically would delegate up to a certain threshold contracting and spending authority to the city manager and department heads. So under the, there is a a variation on the council manager form, and that's the council manager form with a directly elected mayor. This is very common in other states. It's very common in this state of Oregon, for example. But in Washington, whether it's just by custom or experience, we have a very small number of cities that have a a city manager and a directly elected mayor. And three of those are Vancouver, City of Olympia, and the City of Tacoma. And so let's go with it because it's it's kind of an interesting hybrid. The voters elect the mayor, you know, the mayor directly, and they elect the council. And then it is the the mayor and council that selects the city manager, and the city manager runs the day-to-day operations of the city. Under, I should have noted, under the previous variation or the the more typical form of council manager form in Washington, the the voters elect the council, the council selects a ceremonial mayor or the president of the council. Here, the voters elect the mayor. The mayor, under this form of government, has no more authority than any of the other council members. The mayor simply there, they preside over the council meetings, they have ceremonial authority, but they don't have any, they don't take any of the authority that the city manager has. So it's kind of like you've got a separately elected mayor who's kind of the spokesperson or the the face of the community, the elected, the elected spokesperson for the community. But it doesn't change the role or responsibilities of the city manager. The city manager still has all of the authority that they have when there isn't a directly elected mayor. There's no veto power. The directly affect elected mayor does not have that authority.
Okay, we have three, three hands up.
Okay.
Councilmember Vranich, and then Councilmember Dinson and Woo. Go ahead, Councilmember Vranich.
So under this slide, the one prior where there's a electly, her, excuse me, a directly elected council and mayor, what what is the purpose of that? Why does that even exist?
Well, I think it's important for a lot of communities to have, they they want to have a role in selecting sort of the the president of the council or the lead council member. And that that role is termed the mayor. I.
They don't have more power than any other council people.
They don't. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dinson.
Yes, just a quick question. So does the elected mayor have a vote, just as the other council members do?
Yes, the elected mayor has a vote. And in Olympia, they've just simply designated one of their council positions as the the mayoral position.
Now, okay, I'm sorry, is that, did that answer your question, Councilmember Dinson? Okay, Councilmember Woo.
Yes, do you know why this is not a more popular form of of government to have a separately elected mayor?
Well, in Washington, as the law is now, I think this is one of the reasons why. It is a two-step process. You you can't put on the ballot at the same time, you know, in one ballot measure, change to the council manager form of government with a separately elected mayor. You actually have to first change to the council manager form of government and then run another election to to go to a separately elected mayor. And, you know, and I I think I could do a little bit more research if you're simply designating one of the council positions as the mayor. There may be a way to get around that, but I know that that has been kept Washougal, for instance, that just changed recently to the council manager form of government. They were actually trying to get a change in state law so that they could have done that in one one effort, you know, one, but but they were not successful in getting the legislature's attention to this issue. So it's it's still a two-step process.
Now, there's some other questions. So when you say there's a two-step, you can't go from a strong mayor to I'm sorry, what is the two-step process?
Sorry. So as you know, my understanding is, and this is from Washougal's experience, you first would have to change to the council manager form of government, and then subsequently make the change to a to have a directly elected mayor.
Okay, thank you. A council member, I'm sorry, our attorney Daniel Kenny.
First of all.
Try low, try again. No, keep trying. Can anyone hear him?
No.
Not really.
Okay, we'll let you keep trying, and if not, we can have your phone in as well, but keep trying and just barge in.
I just switched something. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, but you have to speak really loud.
Sorry, I and I'll do this very quickly. First of all, thank you for being here, and could you just clarify, just because I want to make it clear? This this map that's on the screen now, the mayor is a member of council, and the selection of that position to be the mayor, the ceremonial mayor, does not change the fact that they are one of the seven council members, correct?
Right, correct.
Right, so you don't have, that's that's a good point. So you don't have seven council and a mayor that has a vote, you have seven total.
Yeah, so you have seven total, and rather than the council selecting one of the council members to be the ceremonial mayor, which is the other way, the public gets to vote on that after as the step two to select from in the election, position one or whatever, that's the one that would be the mayor in the election. But it's still just a council of seven, so there's no change in the council makeup or number or powers or anything. It's just how that ceremonial head would be selected and move forward with that.
That that is true. Now Tacoma is a charter city. So I don't want to get too complicated, but if you were, you know, you could also, you could do something slightly different with this form of government if if you had a charter, if you wanted to go become a charter city. Just, you know, if you wanted a mayor with more power and separately elected and a city manager, you'd you'd require a charter to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, in the in the council manager form of government, the direction to the city manager comes via the council, is that correct? And that is a a what directive, not a how directive.
Right, the council hires the city manager and then directs the city manager as to what, yes, what they want to have happen. But yes, you're right, it's not a how, because the city manager is in charge of implementing that, running the day-to-day operations of the city. Now, I mean, works really well when there's a good, you know, there's got to be a good flow of communications between the city manager and the council and keeping everybody informed and, you know.
Okay, what what do they typically do? Do they have a a key contact for in council for emergencies or whatever?
Andrew can talk about this, but but the there is, you know, there there is a mayor, that ceremonial mayor that is typically chosen, you know, in the typical form of of the council manager form of government, a mayor is selected from by your by everyone on the council, and that mayor will meet with the manager weekly, or, you know, I'm sure that varies, but in my experience, they meet weekly and kind of go over, okay, here are the issues that are facing the city, how we were going to approach those. And, you know, communications, a good city manager is keeping every, the whole council informed through good communications, and whatever information he's or she is providing to one council member, he or she is providing it to all of the council members.
Okay, okay.
But but usually, you know, there's a lot of coordination with the mayor.
Okay, okay. So let me think this through just a second. Having reported to four separate, four separate bosses in several of my jobs in a prior life, that was a living disaster, okay, to put it mildly. There wasn't a single voice, okay, a unified voice. And I'm just curious as to to how, what are the characteristics of the council and the city manager under this form of government that facilitates that? Like I say, my my experience has been bad, okay, really bad.
Yeah, Andrew, why don't you jump in here?
Yeah, I know, I I'd be happy to. I think a good city manager, as Tracy already said, needs to be active and assertive in communication with the council as a whole, as well as with each individual council member. And yes, the mayor, whether directly elected or not, is is one of the members of the council. And as Tracy said, there's more contact with the mayor. You know, as a city manager for eight years in Lakewood, I would have contact with the mayor and often the deputy mayor almost every other day on all sorts of issues. And certainly, if there was a crisis or emergency, that could take place any time of the the night or day. But I also made it my business to be communicating with the other six members on a regular basis so that they didn't feel left out. One of the very touchy points that needs to be made when a new member of the council is elected is that individual council members don't direct the city manager. The council as a whole directs the city manager. So if each member has a pet project that he or she would like to have happen, that's when you get into the problem, as the council member here just said, you can't have four bosses, you can't have seven bosses, it just doesn't work. So when the council as a whole gets together and directs the city manager, it is as a group that those directions are communicated, and that's how both policy and oversight takes place. I found myself on a number of occasions when a newly elected council member would really want to see a certain thing happen, I would I would listen politely, but I would remind them that they need to get other members on board. And if there's a majority of members who want to see something happen, then at the next council meeting, that discussion can take place, and it's not a one-on-one directive that that one city, that one council member gives to the city manager.
Okay, how do you control that? I mean, I can see council members each one calling up and saying, I want this and that.
Well, it's it's an ongoing effort to manage those relationships and to communicate as as openly as possible and as candidly as possible to to get the job done. When I started in Lakewood, there were two factions of council members. One of the groups actually, at one point, had three members of the council elected, and so there were two very different directives that groups wanted to take. And and the only way that I could be successful and the city can move forward was when there was consensus among the council. I won't say it was always easy. It was a lot easier when there was a smooth consensus among members. But a good city manager will be able to convey, you know, his or her limitations in terms of what he can or she can do when an individual member calls up and says, I I really think we have a problem at such and such an intersection, and you need to fix it. Those kind of conversations need to take place with the council as a whole.
So when you mention it that way, couldn't you find that maybe four council members, because they are, they're the majority, can control that city administrator manager because they have the votes? They have the votes to hire or fire, or to, and those other three council members may not get a whole lot of say. Could that that could occur? Is that right?
Yes, yes, that that could occur, and I'm sure from time to time it does. A majority of the council does hire and fire the manager. And city managers, believe me, having been on the national board for a while, city managers get fired all the time around the country. And so it's, there's not a whole lot of job security, but it's it's intended to be that way. And when the relationships work well and the communication is open, I I found myself not having to worry about getting fired.
Member Markley.
Thank you. I I think Mr. Kenny addressed one of my questions, which was if there were, I thought there were going to be eight total, like the mayor would add plus one to the seven councils. So that makes sense now that there would only be seven. Are you, so I'm going to save my personal opinions until later and just ask a question. You said in the non-typical form where the citizens elect the mayor and the and the council, there's only three cities in our state that that have it done that way? And the rest, the council appoints who the mayor would be out of the seven people that are elected by the citizens?
That's correct, yeah.
And so you said it was Vancouver, Olympia, and what was the other city where they have the?
Tacoma.
Tacoma, okay. Okay, and so I've been taking some, so in the more common form, the city manager has pretty much all the authority, they, but they are directed by the by the majority of the council as to what they are to do. And then the council would elect a chair or president out of the seven people that the citizens elect, then the council would elect the person who would be the mayor. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
And they're more of a ceremonial role, they have the same voting power as the remaining, as the rest of the council members. It seems that they would be a little bit more in the know than the other council members if they're the ones that are communicating with the city manager on a daily basis. Could that create some issues? Or like you were saying before, if the city manager is communicating with each council member and trying and trying to, you know, make sure that all seven know what's going on and all seven are aware of what's going on, even though the communication would be more frequent between the person that the council elects to be mayor. I don't know, it just seems like there'd be some issues with that. And then in the charter cities, you said charter cities can have a mayor that has more authority than in a non-charter city.
We have a lot, I mean, well, I'm talking about under the council manager.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, charter cities have a lot more flexibility in how they structure themselves, it's not dictated by state law, so.
Okay.
They have, they could, you know, they're interesting because they have, for example, Seattle is a charter city with an elected city attorney, so lots. Gary. But, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm just trying to wrap my head around the details of all this, and thank you so much.
Yes, councilmember Woo.
Yes, for a practical question here. If if there is a piece of property or a land acquisition or a building acquisition that the council is interested in purchasing, number one, under a a council manager form of government, how do you find out about that piece of property? And number two, who negotiates the purchase of that building or piece of property?
And I mean, go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, when there's the acquisition of property or or contracting with a specific company to do something, the city manager would do that on behalf of the council. And the the council as a whole, of course, would be directing the policy that led to the acquisition of the property or or whatever the specific issue would be. So even though I mentioned earlier, and council member in your question mentioned a majority, it's 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 really the council as a whole, which of course is translated into a majority, would be, you know, would be making those decisions as to what the city manager ought to be doing in terms of acquiring property that's consistent with the policies of the council did, so. But yes, it would be the city manager doing the actual negotiation.
Thank you.
Councilmember France.
Yeah, so. And forgive me if I pronounce your name wrong, is it Mr. Knight?
Knightis.
Knightis. Yeah, that, did I hear correctly to say that under the city manager form of government, that when you were the manager, that you had contact with the mayor on a more regular basis with than the rest of the council?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's problematic. Thank you.
Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, just to swing back for a second, is our council, or I should say, our our city managers, are they hired as regular employees of the city? Or is it strictly a contractual basis that they they come in on?
Well, in my experience, it's it's actually both. The city manager does become an employee of the city, but the there's a contract, I think most city managers I know in this state and probably around the country are, do have an employment contract. And so they serve at the will of the of the council.
Okay, okay. Do they do they often have time limits on those?
There are from time to time terms to set a term of two years, three years, or or whatever it might be to be renewed. But they can also be open ended. My contract for my eight years in Lakewood was open ended. However, that didn't mean that it 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 could have been terminated at any time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So one thing I find is, you know, I get roughly seventy emails a day and about a third of them are from citizens trying to connect some concern that they have feeling. And along with that, I also bring a lot to council that are from the citizens or that's just happening. I don't see where the city administrator would be able to have all the time to do that. So how do you see, if you don't have a strong mayor, how do you see that involve that that the citizens, number one, still get the connection they wanted with the city? Because there's a lot of little things that, you know, I don't I don't know how a city manager could do it all. And number two is how how would they would be able to relay it all so much to the council as well? I mean, it literally takes two of us, it seems right now, and it's hard to even do that.
Well, Mayor, from from my experience, the the emails or the phone calls from citizens would go to any member of the council, which includes the appointed mayor, because the mayor, of course, is a member of the council. So a citizen would actually have, you know, seven elected officials to reach out to. And they were all elected at large, so there wasn't a district issue. Some cities like Puyallup and others do have council council by district, but I'm talking about an at-large situation. So all seven members would be getting the emails. And from time to time, the city manager or the staff, of course, would directly get emails as well. So a citizen has a lot of choices as to where they would like to send an email. But when a council member or the mayor gets an email from a citizen, you know, he would forward that through the to the manager, through the manager, to the staff. And then there could be a response to the question, or there could be a resolution to the issue. And so I I found that once the system is up and running, that it's actually quite effective and citizens get a fairly immediate response.
Right, well, we do have, you know, a lot of citizens, because we're a needy community, that email me and council at the same time. But council has to watch a rotating meeting where they answer to the citizens with other council members too, or they're calling the city manager or city administrator all the time with that specific persons. So there's a filter right now, I I see that that I would be concerned about, where, you know, council might be calling with every citizen request right now. It gets filtered to, but anyway, okay. Councilmember France.
Yeah, Ms. Burrows, is the the majority of the jurisdictions that have a city manager is that right now, we have a in our budget, we have a page that lists our salary ranges for different employees. Is a city manager become an employee with with a salary range?
Yeah, yes, I mean, they, yes, I mean, and they, you know, the city managers in Washington State do a salary survey, I mean, I could get you information about the the, you know, what the typical salary or the salary range, the typical salary range for a city manager in Washington of a city your size or or different sizes. They don't have, I mean, tip, you know, other positions have step increases and so forth. The city manager, to my knowledge, does not have that, but they negotiate in their contract their salary and then get reviewed annually by the council.
That that is, that that is kind of my question, because right now with the city administrator, the the con- the the pay, the pay rate that they get is a negotiated. You know, I I don't know how much I can say about what's involved. I I'm not going to speak to any one particular contract, but there's been times that a city administrator comes on board and there's a bunch of perks that are negotiated in a contract form, whether it be moving expenses or whatever else gets put in there where when you have a department head, say, the Public Works Department head, they they don't negotiate moving expenses and all the rest of that. So I'm just wondering what, you know, what the most commonplace way that those city managers are hired take is.
They actually do, the department, you know, employees can negotiate those things, Councilmember France. So, but again, I think I I Tracy, a city manager negotiation is very similar to a city administrator. It's just a different name, it's the same type of thing. Daniel, did you have a question?
I I briefly raised my hand just because councilmember, I'm trying to remember who said, I think it was Franch, made a comment about the amount of contact between a city manager and the mayor appointed or elected mayor. Frankly, in my experience, it's 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 not too dissimilar to the contact between the mayor or city administrator and the other form of government and like a mayor pro tem for agenda setting and coordination of council with the administration. And I think it really just depends on the city on how much individualized contact there is between the city manager or the mayor and city administrator and that mayor pro tem or mayor on the other side. And so I think, again, that that could look differently on both types of forms of government, depending on that relationship and how much they rely on that particular connection for things like agenda setting.
Thanks.
I I was just clarifying, my question was to clarify Mr. Knightis's comments about his experience in Lakewood by having a lot more convers- communication with the the mayor.
Yeah, the remember, the mayor is selected by their peers on the council. So for any of these forms of government to be really successful, there's got to be a level of trust that communication is flowing, you know, well. So, and that would be the case here with a mayor being the primary contact with the count with the city manager. But as Andrew said, you would, to be a successful city manager, you've got to keep up communicate, good communications with the entire body.
Councilmember Rodenberg, you had, you, I think you had a question.
I did have something, but it had to do with the contract, I was just going to defer to Mr. Dynettis. I would think a contract is a contract, whatever they can negotiate is whatever they can negotiate, whether it means moving expenses or different perks. And I think the city manager or would be someone would would not fit into some kind of particular salary range that was written by the city. I think that we would know what the going rate for an excellent city manager would be, and it would all be a negotiation. And I was going to say, but Mayor Keown also mentioned that anything is negotiable. If we wanted to hire a new director of the XYZ department and they lived in Texas, you can bet they would absolutely negotiate moving expenses and those kinds of things beyond whatever that salary little box we might want to put them in. So that's that's why I lowered up my hand, I thought most of the question, my question had been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tracy, no more questions for the moment.
Okay, well, we'll go on, I think we were here. Okay, so again, this is just, you know, review, you know, the mayor council form of government also has a couple of variations. Which the voters, the mayor separately, the council, the mayor appoints the department heads, you're very familiar with this. Well, this one is not quite what you have, because you have a city administrator, so that's the variation is to have a city administrator. But for smaller cities, that for whatever reason, the budget or, you know, they just aren't that complex an organization. Or they're very small, they have an elected mayor who does all the administration for the city. Mostly relying very heavily on their city clerk. Those are for the smaller cities, it's actually the city clerk that is the de facto city administrator and and runs the city with the with the on the day to day basis. There, you know, the difference here is that the mayor council form of government, there's some negotiation and some work with the mayor and council to set the policy agenda, there's a chair of the council. Again, you're very familiar with this form and the variation on it is the one you have, which where the mayor appoints the city administrator, and it's the city administrator who has the primary responsibility for the day to day operations of the city.
Councilmember.
Yes, thank you. How many cities have the two slides back with no this the mayor? One more back.
Oh, yeah. Uh, well, a lot, because over half the cities in Washington are very small, under five thousand population. So you know, very few of those, except for ones that have, you know, high property values or in urban areas, very few of those have a city administrator. The largest city that I know of that runs this way with no city administrator is Paulsboro, where the mayor, Paulsboro is probably very comparable to Gig Harbor, but they have a mayor who is, you know, a full-time mayor and is very capable. And so she does not have an administrator, but, you know, they are they are looking at definitely budgeting in a city administrator, because it's it's a, you know, depending on who's elected mayor, they may have little to no experience in administration or government. And so it's, they're very appreciative of having some a right-hand person who's running the day to day operations. It's just those cities that you know, mostly for budgetary reasons, I think.
Well, I think Paulsboro has quite a bit of tax base as well, so that's all, that's all, thank you for answering the question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, so just considerations, a lot of these we've talked already talked about, they've come up in conversation today about, you know, what you might consider. And it really is a matter of your community, what is the right thing for your community? Not these particular considerations don't sway one way or another necessarily, but think, you know, you might think about these as you're thinking about these different forms of government, the capacity to determine and implement the vision and direction for the community, responsiveness and accountability and where that best rests, the appropriate role of politics in an administration, having someone who is elected by the people and has a particular, you know, some political capital is very handy if you're negotiating with the county on particular issues and or if, you know, there's a crisis, can be helpful there. Professional management and stability. That, that's another consideration. City managers not, as Andrew said, it's not a completely apolitical position in in the sense that you know, as the council changes, they may have different interests in in the direction they want to go in terms of city managers, so it's not it, while it doesn't change on political cycles, you have city, some city managers are very stable and successful in their communities and have stayed a long time, but there is more turnover in this position, city manager, than you would find in other positions in city government. Facilitation of civic engagement, effectiveness and efficiency and political harmony. So what, so just review what shifts when you go to a council manager form from the mayor council form. The selection of the city manager would change, section with the chief executive, setting the policy agenda. The appointment of department heads would be done by the city manager. The responsibility for day to day operations would transition to a city manager. Developing the budget and legislative proposals would transition to the city manager. Attending and voting members at council meetings. You know, it would be those, the elected members of the council would be attending and voting at the council and you would elect your mayor to, a mayor to preside over the council meetings, and there's no veto authority under this form of government.
So question, when you when you have more turnover in city managers, then they've got to get comfortable with the city, and then they've got to find the direction of the council. So I would think that the So I would think that the it, the consistency for staff even is going to be a little harder because it's going to bounce a little more. Every time you have a shift, you have a little bit more adjustment. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, well, it's a shift in a council of seven versus a shift in the mayor. I mean, in terms of, you know, a shift in direction for the city. So sometimes there can be continuity from mayor to mayor to mayor, same with council to council to council. And sometimes there, there are more changes, but the the changes are somewhat tempered by the fact that you, you've got seven elected officials. But yes, I mean, you know, in any of these positions, the city administrator or the city manager. You know, the continuity is something that is an issue.
Councilmember.
Of course, we're all elected or we go for election every four years. So that's sort of a, a temporary and changeable position or view on the council as well. I want to go over setting a policy agenda. So right now, our policy, our agendas, what does this mean, setting a policy agenda?
I don't, I don't really mean the, the city, the council meeting agenda, although it, I'm talking about kind of who sets the vision for the city and the direction you want to go and what, what are your priorities in terms of the kind of things that you want to be accomplished within the city? So.
So that under council manager form of government, then the council would set the visioning for the city.
Correct. Yeah.
And the way the city goes as opposed to strong mayor, which is a strong mayor would said that.
Yeah, although, although in a strong mayor, there, you know, there certainly could be collaboration or, you know. So, but the mayor has got more influence in that form of government.
But one thing, just my observation is I take a lot of my direction from council because they set policy, they set resolutions, they set ordinances. So, and really they set the budget because they authorize the use of the funds. So I really direct administrator to follow council's actions. You know, much.
So I have another question then here, I guess, because I've heard this both ways of priority of projects that get accomplished. Who's under this, and if you have a council manager form of government, who sets the priorities of which budgeted items get completed?
Do you mean like capital projects? Is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Okay. Well, so typically what happens, and Andrew can jump in here too, but typically the staff, the city manager and the staff will develop a set of criteria, which, you know, they would likely, if this is, you know, if they're developing it for the first time, they would bring that set of criteria, like this is how we're going to rank projects to the council. And then the council would say, okay, yes, we approve. This is the way we want you to rank projects. Then they would go use those criteria to things and then come back at budget time to the city council and say, okay, here are, here's our, our capital budget. Here is our plan for capital priorities for this year, and this is how we established those priorities. The city council, of course, is the one who adopts the budget so they can make changes to that, to those priorities. Anything else, anything you want to add to that, Andrew?
Well, Tracy, all I would add is that, you know, the budget, of course, is done either annually or biannually. And so there's a, a lot of contact between a a good city manager and his staff and the council between those budget times about the sequence of especially capital projects and, and, and conditions that would cause schedules to change, which happens all the time. My practice was that every week before the regular council meeting, there would be a discussion about, you know, major projects and where they were and how they were going. And if, if any council member, not just the mayor, but if any council member had a concern, there was ample opportunity on a regular basis to weigh in on, on the concerns about prioritization and scheduling. So again, it gets back to the, the importance of communication. There's not just an annual budget that, that goes by itself for 12 months or for two years. There needs to be that regular communication.
So, so basically you offer a recommendation for priorities and then the council votes on those. And then you, as this, or, or any city manager would then follow the direction of priorities set by the council.
Well, yeah, the, the priority setting would be part of the budget process, and that very clearly is something the council does with a formal vote. But between those formal budget actions, the city manager needs to bring forward to the council on a regular basis, you know, what is the status of the grants that are received or the grants that are conditions have changed and, you know, there's, you know, a number of reasons why projects may have to have their schedules adjusted. And even though the city manager has the authority to keep the work going on those projects through public works, through parks, through the other departments. The city manager, the, the city manager needs to bring that forward. So the council is hearing on a regular basis what's going on, not that they have to vote on it, but they have to hear about it. And if there's a concern, believe me, every elected council member I've worked with is not at all hesitant to express concerns about dissatisfaction with the scheduling or the prioritization. So the communication is ongoing. So the council is not surprised by the fact that a project's not getting done or not going to be completed on time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Heims.
Yeah. You mentioned a high turnover rate of city managers. And I'm just curious, what, what do you do in the interim, in the transition? That is, for example, an administration change, the makeup of the council changes, okay? And you want a new city manager. And your old one realizes he's on the block, so he's out of there.
Yep.
Who's, who's running the shop at that point?
Well, generally you would appoint an interim city manager.
Okay, so you'd have a a contract, a contact.
Yeah, could be somebody on your staff that, you know, you think would be a good, could may or may not be interested in the full time permanent position, but would be a good interim. Or there is sort of a cadre of people who, for whom this is sort of their, their career is to be an interim city manager and there are folks who are really good at it and perhaps prefer it to the permanent position.
And just the fact that the my, my assumption here is the city managers in most cases are not residents of the area, let alone the municipality or whoever it is, okay? These, these are hired guns going different places, wherever the situation is the best for them professionally or their interest from where they would like to live for a while, that type of thing. And, and, and I guess my real question is, is does that seem to promote this, this concept that there is high turnover? They don't have, put it that way.
They're asking this, just, you know, I mean, yeah, so when I started, I I let the city administrator go and just because it was a new leadership. And so then I had, then I appointed someone and then, but from the city, but you know, they had another job. And so then I tried to help run it with them and that was just too, too tough on both of us. And so then we had an interim from someone from outside and then they needed so much time off too. And then we got a permanent and for whatever reason that didn't work out. And then it would have been as time consuming to do interim again as going out for the, the person we wanted permanently. So we went for the person permanently, but as a result, we, I, I had to run it myself for five to six more months. So it's, it's taxing. Every time you have to bring in an interim, it costs a lot more money and it's much more taxing. Go ahead, Andrew. I'm just letting you know where, where some of this is coming from.
No, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. When I mentioned earlier, the turnover, it was intended to emphasize that a city manager can be fired by the council at any time. So there's not a set term that would keep a city manager in place with the perception that perhaps a non-elected official has too much authority and is, is running a city for, for too long. However, as a practical matter, when you look at city managers in our Pierce County area, the, you know, the average tenure is actually higher than the norm around the country. The, the minimum term to, to stay professional, according to the National Association, is at least two years. I believe the average of city managers with my familiarity of a number of them would be in the four to five year range. However, I know some who have been in cities for 20 to 25 years. And when you look at the Tacoma Pierce County area, when you look at University Place and Lakewood, you know, my, I'd say Lakewood averages eight to 10 years for city managers. And University Place would probably be the same. So it's not as though the cities are going through transitions every, every year or so. And I agree completely. There's a cost to the transition, whether it's a city administrator transition, whether it's a city manager transition, or for that matter, whether it's a mayor transition. I mean, transitions in and of themselves are, are major changes that can, can be costly and can wreak havoc on an organization. So continuity is not something that does not exist with city managers at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this just shows you of the cities similar size to Gig Harbor in Washington state. You can see here that I'm covering them, 14 of them, of the 14, seven above and below the population. A little over 70% have the mayor council form of government. And the others have the council manager form of government.
So 71% have what we currently have.
Correct. So here's just a look at the last 50 years. This is, you know, of changes in form of government in Washington, changing from the mayor council to council manager forum. So over the 50 years, I mean, this is not a, you know, a common thing to do to change your form of government. So less than 10% of the cities in the state over the last 50 years have changed their form of government. There are four cities that went from council, mayor council to council manager and then back. Snohomish, I mean, which had a, which had a, a city manager for quite a long time, reverted back just recently in a very close vote. Ferndale, Goldendale, Efrida. State law establishes you can't, you can't move from one to the other and back quickly. I think, I, I don't remember off the top of my head what the, how long you have to stay with one, but it's at least four years and it may even be eight. So, but you can see that there were 20 that have changed for back, changed back. So there, over the last 50 years, 16 cities have changed from mayor council to council manager and stuck with it. Going the other way, there are 10 cities that moved from council manager to mayor council. So again, it's not a very common, usually something precipitates the change. Either there's a sense, either there's, you know, agreement. I mean, the ones that are successful, because I always have to go to the ballot, the ones that are successful, either there's been agreement. For example, in Washougal, they had a blue ribbon task force. The mayor supported the change to council manager form of government. And it was a, you know, united council and mayor that recommended this to the voters and they, they made that change.
Some more questions not to.
Oh, sure.
Keep where exactly your thought where you're at. Councilmember Heims. You're on mute, Councilmember Heims.
I'm, I'm assuming that a lot of these changes, particularly to, from the mayor council to the city manager council were growth related. Is that a safe assumption or is that erroneous?
Well, you can, you can look at the list. You know, there's a variety of reasons that that, that a change is made. You know, some of them are, some, some of them are, are, you know, there's been some, something that has gone wrong, a, some kind of scandal that has happened. And so there's a, there's either way, you know, on either form. And so there's a sense of, okay, we need to change. Others are, you know, you know, I don't know that they were growth, some, some perhaps, but I, I don't know that they're really growth related. In Washougal's case, I don't think it was growth related. I think it was just a sense that they looked at the cities around them and, and, and the governance, studied the governance options and decided for them, it was the best way to go. So again, it's motivated, sometimes it's, it's a, you know, a very strong group within the city of citizens that is seeking a change for, you know, some, sometimes it's motivated by a group of citizens that wants a directly elected mayor. And so, and they feel strongly about that and they get, gain momentum around that issue. And then, and then on the other side, you know, there's sometimes a call for more professional leadership if, if that's been an issue. So I don't, I don't, I don't think that it's related to growth.
Okay, because some of the things I've read kind of implied that growth resulted in complexity and that complexity required more professional management.
Yeah. It is, it is true that, that the city manager is more common in the larger cities in Washington.
Okay.
Councilmember Aversole.
I'm sorry, I'm just seeking some clarification. I believe the mayor had said that 71% of cities are the same form of government that we have. And I think, Madam Burrows, you agreed to that, but then I also heard you tell Councilmember Markley that only three cities in Washington are like this. So I'm, I'm a little confused on that.
So the 71% is just simply the cities that are most similar in population to to Gig Harbor. Of those cities that are, you know, kind of you're within a couple of thousand persons population of Gig Harbor, 71% of those have the mayor council form of government. Now, you know, I don't know how much that, how meaningful that is. I mean, really, because, because even within that population range, you'll see some of these cities are more rural, some of them are in a more urban environment, but, but pop, cities of, you know, this size tend to have the mayor council form of government in Washington. So the other, the, the, the three cities, that was simply that hybrid form of government. Where you have a city manager and a separately elected mayor. That's highly unusual. And so that's why it's such a small number. Statewide about, as I said, statewide, 54 cities have the council manager form of government and they represent 40% of the population of the state. I'm sorry to throw out a lot of numbers. I don't, I don't want to confuse things more than I already have apparently, but I'm trying to give you the context there.
Obviously, if it's, you know, if it's not a mayor council, then it gives council more power. So council manager, so of the cities that changed, how many were initiated by the council as opposed to the citizen, citizens, because that might look like a power graph.
So there are two, well, that, that's a good segue. There are two ways to initiate a form of government change. So any city can change its form. It can be initiated either by a resolution adopted by the city council or by a petition process. And you have to get, a petition process would be initiated by the citizens of the city. And they would have to get the signatures of ten percent of the voting, you know, of those that voted in the previous general election. It's, so I don't have the numbers in terms of, you know, which have been by petition and which have been by resolution of the council. So I don't, I can't exactly, but, but it's easier, obviously, for the, for this to be put on the ballot by the city council. So I think that is generally the more common. But oftentimes, those council members are they're hearing from the citizens that, that they want a change. So, you know, they may be responding to, to that, that call for change from their citizens. The, the citizen, or the voting citizens of the community are the ones that have the final say. Because this has to go to an election and to reorganize to a different form of government. And that would generally be the, the general election following either the the petition being presented to the council or the council adopting a resolution. You have to have the election within six months of a petition being submitted or a resolution. So if there isn't a general election in that six-month period of time, it would have to be on a special election ballot.
Councilmember Eversole.
Yes, we, you, you gave us some background information about the turnover rate for city managers. In your experience, what is, what is the common turnover rate for the city staff? Just to get some kind of average here is, do you, do you have those numbers?
I don't, I don't have, you know, I think it, that would vary by position. But generally, those, yeah, I mean, they have, they have a much more longstanding.
Okay, so it's more common for staff to stay in lock and position?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So when you, you said that, okay, so if, if you did adopt it, it has to change within six months to the other form of government?
Well, it has to go on to, it has to go to the ballot. If the, if the council adopted a resolution, it has to go to the ballot within six months.
Right.
So, but I'll get, I think the next slide talks about the, how the transition happens. And it's, so the timing of the vote on a change of form is set by the city council. It's the next general election at the latest, but you've got to do it, that, that would be typically where it would go. The change in form is effective upon certification of the elected results. This is different. If you're changing the other way, going from council manager to elected mayor, of course, the transition doesn't take effect until you've actually elected a mayor, which, you know, and there's a process for that. But since there are no new elected positions being created in this change to a council manager form of government, the change takes effect upon certification of the election results. And so what typically happens is well, the mayor becomes, who was ever elected mayor, becomes a council member. The eighth council member, and they serve in that role until the end of their term. And it is quite typical for the city administrator to help in the transition or become the interim city manager. Or, you know, if the council decided they wanted to do that, which happened in Washougal, they simply hired the city administrator as the city manager. But the changes, it happens, goes into effect rather quickly. I mean, it's a, it's a, yeah, it happens. It's effective at the certification of the election.
So I'm sorry, I was trying to, there were hands, this is a busy slide, really. So I'm trying to grab it all. I'm trying to take it all in.
Yes, it is my understanding, of course, that you could also have this placed on the ballot of a primary election, according to Pierce County auditors and election folks there. Is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, you have to have it within, as I said, within six months of, of, so of the either the petition or the resolution by the council. I was looking at the RCWs yesterday and reviewing this. And I will, I would, it's, 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 it's a little convoluted, but I think if you're within that six-month period, that it, that you have to put it on the general, but I will confirm that. I could see where it could be on the primary ballot, if depending on the timing of the council's resolution. You could time your council resolution so that it would be on the, on the, on the primary ballot.
But then you might have to have two special elections too, to be within the six months. Is that?
Why would you have to have that?
Go ahead.
It really depends on the timing of the council's resolution.
Go ahead, Ginny, did you have another question?
So I'm trying to think, why, why you think there would have to be two?
Well, if your, if your, if your primary or your, your election time didn't coincide with with the next gen, the next general election, then you might have to do it prior to, within that six-months time.
But, but if you do it during the primary, that is your election, that is your election, and that would, you wouldn't have one during the general.
Right.
Right.
Okay, great. I was trying to clarify that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Heinz. Up, you're mute. You're muted again, Councilmember Heinz.
Man mute, yeah. With the eighth council member, what, what do you do with ties? Four to four.
That would be, you, that would not prevail, yet, there's no tiebreaker. So a tie vote is a no, I mean, it does not prevail. So that would not go forward. It would be the same as a no vote.
Okay, okay. So, so ties or no?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, this is a question for Ms. Burrows. You said that in order for this to pass, should it be on the ballot, it would have to be a certain percentage of votes in favor based upon the previous general election. So if that previous general election was a presidential election,
Okay.
Huge numbers, then the number to pass would have to be huge as well.
No, I'm sorry. That is not the, that threshold only relates to the number, if you were, no, I'm sorry, I don't, let's go back to how the election or the change is initiated. And what I, what I meant to say, if I didn't say this properly, was that the number of signatures you need on a petition
Oh, okay.
to start the process is ten percent of those that voted in the previous general election. So you're right, in order for a petition that was being gathered in the year, in, after a presidential election, would have a much higher threshold in terms of the number of signatures that would be needed to get.
So if it was from the resolution, council resolution form of getting it on a ballot, would have to be a simple majority to pass.
Yeah. And, and yes, that's correct. And in terms of the election itself, the ballot measure itself on the change in form of government, that's simple majority. No matter how many people vote, it's a simple majority. There's no minimum threshold of voters that needs to be met.
Thank you.
Yes, Daniel Kenny.
Yeah, so I just wanted to chime in a little bit on this slide. This is such an important slide, or this one, and I think it was the neck, next one, maybe. And we don't need to dive into all of this right now, but, but the important considerations are that, that eighth council member that creates a unique dynamic for the remainder of the mayor's term. The change in the form of government taking effect at the certification of the election means that the city needs to have a very comprehensive plan on what that city will look like and how it will run. Ordinances to change code to make sure that you have the new form of government implemented into your city. And so you're, there's a lot of work that will go into something that might pass in that election. You, you certainly will have a little bit of time from the election to when it's certified that you, you may get a sense on how it's going to go and kind of speed up a process with some special meetings to get things ready. But the, the change of form of government, it starts right away. It, it's not, you can't say we want this to happen in six months if it passes or something like that, so that we can get ready for it. The, the, the time and the expense of getting prepared for it will happen without knowing whether it will happen. And I think that's an important consideration. And then the, the, the final one, and I know that this happens to be the situation that Gig Harbor is in right now. But in years where there is a mayoral election on, in the general election, if this were to be put into a position to be on that same general election, you have both a mayor running, mayor candidates, mayoral candidates running to be elected to mayor and the potential that there will not be a mayoral position in the city anymore, depending on the results of that election. And I think that there's some consideration to what kind of candidates you're going to get in an election where the position may not actually exist. So something to consider with timing and when these things will occur.
That's a good point. I was going to bring that up in a month or so, that just the council does understand that is, if you're, if you have on the same ballot not to have a mayor, it's going to be very hard to get possibly good people to be a mayor candidate, knowing that the day that they are elected is the day that it possibly might change to not have a mayor. So, yeah, your, your pool of quality candidates might become a lot less effective. Councilmember Woo.
So actually, if you have, if that would happen during a general election, then I guess whoever would be elected to be mayor would be part of the city council.
Correct.
But I, I'd actually chime in on that real quick, sorry. The, the change of form of government effectuates at the certification of the election, whereas the mayor does not take office until the end of the last mayoral term. So that will actually never happen. And so the change of form of government will occur, the current mayor, not the one elected in that election, would remain till the end of their term, but that newly elected mayor wouldn't get in for a may, or a council member term following that. So, so they, they would never take office and the city mayor may have a short period of time as an eighth council member.
Oh, oh, hey, they would, they would move to eighth council then?
For a very short period of time until the end of their term, which is only from the election till their term end.
Thank you.
So say that one time more time, um, let's say you have a, Daniel, you have it on the ballot and a mayor gets elected, but then they choose not to have a mayor. The mayor's elected only till, it wouldn't be the four terms. It would only be.
Yeah, so, so, so the, the mayoral term doesn't start until after the new year. And so the change of form of government, assuming the election gets certified, you know, in sometime in November, let's just say, that's when the change of form of government takes effect. And so that newly elected mayor, whether it's the same mayor as before or a new mayor, is never actually going to get into office to then continue a term. And so whoever was mayor when that change of form of government happened would become an eighth council member and would sit in that position until their, their existing term ends. So if it's on an election year, that, that city mayor would be an eighth council member for a matter of weeks.
Right, got it. Uh, Councilmember Markley.
Thank you. Okay, so if that happened, then what do you do after that? What do you do after that mayor finishes their eighth or finishes their term of being that eighth council member, then you're down to six council members and now you have to elect or you're, you have seven council members and then those seven council members elect a mayor. They, they peer, they choose one of their peers to be mayor. Is that what happens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So a question, so outside of just the cost of the ballot, there obviously is, is a price for change in the form of governments. I mean, it, expense-wise, it's, it's not just a matter of, do you know what, kind of roughly what it costs for a city to change? To, I mean, it is, it's, it's, there's a process.
Yeah, I, I have, I, you know, it is, as your attorney said, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work. And I can send you a checklist, you know, for the things that need to be done in that transition or preparing for that transition. I don't have, I don't know of any cities that have sort of kept track of all the hours that they spent and, and assigned a cost to it. But, but I will send that to you, so you have a sense of the magnitude of the, of the work and you could, you know, potentially kind of figure, work from that up. How long would it take us to do that and come up with a rough estimate of the cost?
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around what all of this would mean. So in terms of going back to finding viable candidates for, for mayor, people who are wanting to run, run for mayor expecting to be the mayor, not be, if you're, when you're thinking of campaign dollars that they're going to be trying to raise and spend, people are going to be donating money to them to become mayor. It just seems like this would be so strange to have this on the ballot as an, as a have, to have people be running for mayor with, well, depending on what the citizens vote on, I might be mayor or I may never take office. I mean, how would you, I, I just don't know how that would work. I'm just trying to think this through, you know. As far as timing is, the timing goes for, for candidates for an upcoming election. And not only do we have an upcoming election for mayor, but we have four open council seats that are coming up as well. So it just, it just seems, it just seems to me that with, with everything that's been going on, not just in our city, but in the world right now with COVID and instability everywhere, I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how this would work and how you would get someone to run knowing, and raise money for a campaign and be out there campaigning and have no idea if they're going to ever be mayor or not. It, it just, anyway, I'm, I guess I'm just speaking my thoughts out loud and maybe I should just hold off.
Tracy, do you have anything to add to that?
It, it is, would be unusual. It's, it, it presents some unusual circumstances.
Uh, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, I guess along that same line, I, I, I think, I think we're heading toward almost a general principle here. You really don't want to have a change of government to a manager form and a mayoral election concurrently in the same election year. I think that's a pretty safe bet.
The only exception to that that I, is where the sitting mayor is very supportive of the change and runs for mayor. This, this has happened, but it, you know, runs for mayor with the expectation that they will no longer be mayor. But that's happened, but it, again, unusual set of circumstances.
Okay, so, so, so let me ask a question. Most of these cities that have made the transition, did, did they stay away from mayor and form of government occurring concurrently?
I can, I can, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I will, I can, that's easy enough for me to find out. But my sense is, yes, simply because there are three other years. But I, my sense is yes, simply because there are three other years uh other than that, that mayoral election. So just by statistics, you would think that there would be more of these elections happening in an off year. Uh, but it, you know, I can, I can dig into that.
Yeah, I, I, it, it, it would be helpful if, if you, if you get that information because I'm, I'm always one to uh say, let's learn from the mistakes of others, the successes and mistakes of others, and I think this one's a freebie. Thank you.
And Andrew, I don't, I, I want you to be able to, if you have any comments, obviously feel free to interject.
Well, thank, thank you, Mayor. I am, a, a lot of the comments I was going to make have been discussed in, in part of the, but the questions and answers that we've done. The only thing I would add is just, um, you know, in terms of my own experience, having been both a city administrator under a mayor council forum and a city manager under a council manager forum, that I, I really do believe that there's no right or wrong system. I think each system can work well uh when people are communicating well and, and, and contribute to that. Uh, and when it meets the needs of the community, uh, I think I did well and performed well and the, the two cities that I would compare to each other under the two different forms, both were working well uh during the number of years that I played the role of city administrator and, and city manager. Uh, and of course, your city administrator currently, uh Bob Larson has been both a city manager and a city administrator, and so he comes to you with that uh experience. For me, the major difference was that uh when I was a city administrator, the relationship with the mayor was the, the primary relationship. I was evaluated annually by the mayor and of course hired, and, and I could have been fired by the mayor. Whereas when I was a city manager, the relationship with the council as a whole, which included the mayor, was the primary relationship. And I was evaluated annually uh by the council as a whole. Uh, and so the council members, each of them had more involvement, uh not just in the hiring process or the potential firing process, uh but the annual evaluation uh of the strengths and weaknesses and the needs for adjustment, all those uh qualitative issues that go along with uh keeping the relationships working. Uh, and it was a very public process, but that's one that uh takes place as a city manager. Uh, the only other comment I would make is that, you know, in Pierce County, we can talk about the, the numbers statewide and, and nationally and and by the various um the ci- cities the size of Gig Harbor and how they relate uh around the state, but uh but in the Pierce County area, uh at least in my opinion, uh six of the major cities, uh which include of course Tacoma, Lakewood, University Place, uh Puyallup, Furcrest, and by our council manager cities. Uh, and I do believe that Gig Harbor is a major city and, and, and a player uh in um, in the Pierce County region. And so because of some of the regional relationships, you know, there would be more commonality uh to consider that form of government. Uh, not that it's the right form, but to consider that form of government because of the, uh, the players uh throughout this region. I think when you look nationally, you can see, you know, statistics on both sides. There are pluses and minuses. I know for the council manager form of government, uh, one of the big pluses is that you have a professional administrator who is considered nonpartisan, essentially nonpolitical, and, and as I mentioned, can be terminated at any time. Uh, but on the, the negative side, there, from time to time, people believe that there's too much authority in a non-elected position, and so that is a valid objection, if you will. That is often a perception about the council manager. Uh, in the mayor council form of government, I think uh a positive is that there's a separation of power and the people have a stronger voice. Uh, but on the negative side, there's a question from time to time, if, if there's ever a mayor who perhaps lacks the expertise or, or wants to usurp the council, uh then that could be a negative. So there are pluses and minuses uh for both. But I really believe that you know, the, the right form of government is the one that Gig Harbor wants to have and that it will work well if there's open and proper communication among the players. Uh, it was said earlier in one of the questions about does a city manager o- only talk to the mayor and uh because there might be more frequent contact, but under a council manager form of government, uh as Tracy also mentioned, the, the council has uh appointed or, or selected one of the members to be the mayor, or in the case of uh directly elected mayor, which I actually think is preferable for council manager, you do have the mayor playing a, a unique role. So there may be more frequent contact uh as I indicated when I was city manager for eight years, that's, that was the case. But I believe the quality of communication with the other members of the council uh were as important and as vital, uh and so I didn't want to give the impression that uh that there was favoritism because that's, uh, that can be the undoing of a city manager. Uh, and so rather than use the term ceremonial as uh in reference to the mayor uh in his or her role, I think uh ceremonial, I believe, isn't the best word. I mean, the, the uh, the best word in my opinion is, is leadership, that if the council has accepted that the mayor is the leader uh of the council, uh then they can work well together and the manager again would take direction from the the body as a whole, not from individual members. So I think that those would be the other comments and uh that I would add, and if there are other questions for me, I'd be happy to, to answer them.
Uh, councilmember Francis.
Yes, thank you. Well, yeah, you can, you can try and walk back uh your earlier statement. Uh, that's fine, but uh, and I, I kind of um take a little bit of umbrage with your, your statements about uh the relationships of these larger cities that have the city manager form of government, that uh Gig Harbor, you, you seem to be implying that, that uh Gig Harbor um is a pu- is a, would be considered one of those players. Well, and I believe that our city administrator could fulfill the roles of dealing with these other jurisdictions that have city managers just as well as a city manager could.
So um, you know, again, one thing I, I were, I, I'd just like to have your take again on it, um Tracy or someone is a our council, a lot of times, a lot of our votes are not six to one or five to two. They're three, four. They're four, three. They're, they're very often that way. So uh, one of my concerns, whether I was mayor or not, is that a city manager is um basically is going to have to answer to those four people and/or they could, or they're, they're, they might be out. And those other three council members then don't have a lot to say because you've got uh possibly, you know, again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying any individuals, I'm just saying of any council, you have seven council members. Maybe four of them make deals with, with uh, not deals, but they, they have views with citizens or groups uh to go a certain way, and then they, they direct that city administrator that way. And then you've, where, where when you have a mayor, you kind of have a balancing board trying to balance the, and I guess, I guess it gets back to your creativeness that you said of a city manager, because I would hate to have three council members, which is a lot, not have a say, but again, I guess that's it's, it's all in the hands of having a good city manager, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's a challenging environment. You know, the, the split council where the, the votes are four, three, three, four. Um, that is a challenging environment for a city manager to work in, uh but the, the, the job of the city manager is to implement the vision that the council uh adopts. So a, a good city manager is going to be able to do that, no matter who's at, at the, you know, who, who is prevailing in those votes, but like, yeah, no doubt, that's a very challenging environment.
Right. Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, thank you. Just a procedural um question, in a council manager form of government, how, does that affect standing committees or would it automatically go, like, would we go back to a committee of the whole type study session meetings, or would we still have, you know, council committees? We've got five council committees right now that three council members serve on each committee. And then, so would, would, is, do, do a lot of cities still operate that way with separate council, standing council committees, and then the mayor just sort of sits in on whatever committees the other council people sit on?
Yes, the mayor is considered a, a mem- again, a member of the council when you're establishing the membership of those committees, but uh very, very typical for a, a council manager form of government to have council committees.
Okay, thank you.
So that means if the mayor becomes the eighth council member, then the mayor sits on, would be able to sit on some of those committees as well?
Yes, and I don't know if, you know, yeah, well, yes, the only, you know, there's a lot of variation about membership on committees and whether you ha- whether they're uh, you know, how many council members you have on each committee. I, I don't know how Gig Harbor runs, but yes, uh, I, I don't think that would change dramatically, except that the mayor would be a council member and would be a, a sign to council committees.
Thank you. Okay, um, oh, there's, there's another question. Councilmember Heims.
Uh, yeah, uh, I mentioned before the, the how and the what. And it's intriguing to me, the the relationship between the city manager and the council, I, I'm assuming is primarily in, in the what, here's what I got to deliver by the end of the year or some point there between beginning of the year, end of the year, et cetera. And, and I guess my question is, 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 do, do you use management by objectives? How, how does this work? I almost see a, a contract literally between the city manager and the council called, here's what we're going to do. Here's, here's what I have to deliver, not how I'm going to do it. Here's what I have to deliver, okay? This year, and it could be satisfaction on ongoing operations with customers in the city. It could be capital projects. I can think of a whole series of things. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? It seems to me there's, there's, that would be a real challenge.
Well, uh, I would address your question uh in reference to the evaluation process that I mentioned earlier, that uh, you're, you're totally correct, that it is the council that sets the expectations for the what of the policy, and it's the city manager that would be doing the how. Uh, but the, the council is playing an oversight role to ensure that those things get done and they get done timely and that they get done successfully. Uh, and so uh during my years in the role, the, the annual evaluation process would uh address those issues, that certain things went really well, but these other things are not going as well and they need to improve, you know, as an example. And so there's the formal process of evaluation. Uh, and then there's also the informal process at the regular meetings of the council to be able to address uh that, that there's maybe some dissatisfaction in certain areas, or there may be a need to improve communication with a certain part of the community. Uh, so it is, it is ongoing, but I, um, but I believe, uh, as I mentioned earlier, it's part of the overall communication process uh that a, a good city manager will make sure that, that he's getting uh the direction that the, the council's needs are being met.
Okay, do, do, do i- in your experience, would you be receptive then to a change during the year of the how? Somebody doesn't like the way you're doing things. Not that you're not going to get the right result, but uh, the community doesn't like this, doing this. They think it ought to be a different way, a different, a different how to do this. Has that arisen and, and what was your, what was your take on that?
Well, but the how is a big part of, of, of customer service and reaching out to a community that, you know, maybe the, um, you know, maybe a sewer project is on schedule and is being fully funded, and that's a good thing. Uh, but if you're upsetting, if the city is upsetting all the businesses and all the residents because of the sewer improvement project, uh, and is not properly communicating what the changes will be and what the disruptions will, will look like, uh, then it's not going well. And so uh I believe from my experience playing the various roles I've played, that it's, you know, it's as important how you do something as to whether or not you get it done. Uh, and, and, and to what extent the community is satisfied seeing the changes being made. So the, the council role, uh, in my opinion, under either form of government, is to, is to make sure that the, that citizens are getting their uh questions answered and are feeling that, that a customer service satisfaction, that things are being done by city staff uh in a, in a positive manner. So yeah, so that's very much a part of it.
Okay, and they, they, they make that part of the objectives then, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That would be interesting in a, in a upcoming election, when you have four new council members uh up for vote and you're trying to do that at the same time. Uh, Daniel Kenny.
Just ver- I know we have something else on the agenda, so I'll just be very quick. Just to what councilmember Heim said, there, there still is a separation between policy setting and the administration of the city. And, and, and in my view, it would not be appropriate in the policy setting that's done by council to dictate how the city should be administered. That's why you're hiring a professional. And so um, there, there is, you know, we, we still got to make sure that the two sides are walking on their sides of the line, but working together.
Come on this way.
And working with the community on everything that uh A- Andrew said. So um, we just want to make sure that we don't uh think that we can dictate how, how things are done if from an administrative standpoint, because that still is through the statutes um separated out.
Right. You don't want to micromanage.
Exactly.
Okay, um, that, this is the, this is the last slide, correct?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, we really appreciate it. Uh, we really are appreciate the thoughtfulness of taking the time to present this to us and answer. You know, it wasn't a whole lot of slides, but there were a whole lot of questions, so we, that's very important and uh it's a lot to take in. And some of those in the statistics are important, and so thank you. Um, yeah, if you could, if you could get, you know, Bob had, uh, councilmember Heims had a question. You were going to find out um, how many, how many cities did do it in the middle of a cycle? Um, it would be interesting, and what kind of, obviously, there's more than just the cost. What kind of costs and administrative work will all this take? And I know that's, that could be huge, but whatever you can give us, uh, that would be, we appreciate it. And, and whatever you send us, we'll pass that on to council as well and, and our attorney.
Very good, yes. Thank you.
All right, and did you, did you have a call to Mike, to Mike Wilson too, that's going to speak?
Yeah, and I'm, I encouraged him to tune in, uh, but yeah, I coordinated, I let him know what we were going to cover, and so um he's going to take a little bit of different tack, I think.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much, and I'm sure council, if they have questions too, they'll, they'll reach out to you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Really appreciated the opportunity to be here.
Yeah, thank you. And I think you sent us this PowerPoint, is that correct?
Yes.
Great, great. And then council, if we may all stay on, um, we've got another meeting right, you know, added to this meeting, so appreciate it.
Mayor, this is uh city administrator Larson. I think we have to remove ourselves from this meeting and go to a different, different uh meeting invite, a separate one.
Go to a meeting, yeah.
I, I want to have uh Molly and or Josh explain that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, Andrew.
I'm not sure if I saw that other invite.
Leaving?
Yeah, it was sent out this afternoon.
Well, what, what was sent out this afternoon? I wasn't around my computer, so what is this next portion supposed to be?
You should, we have to close. Councilmembers should have received the go-to-meeting link for the executive session. That's what we'll adjourn from the Zoom link and go to the go-to-meeting link. It should be in your email from probably around noon today.
That's what I asked Josh, what time exactly was it?
Okay, we're not going to leave right away because we have to adjourn this, but I want to make sure everyone gets on as well.
Yeah, I'll just, let me just clarify, the, the meeting agenda for this meeting, the first item, we're just concluding, agenda item number two for this meeting. Agenda item number two for this meeting is an executive session for pending, uh, or for potential litigation. Um, we will all leave this meeting to the, uh, other link that was provided at noon. We will have an executive session. When that's concluded, we will come back to this meeting right here, which is the open public meeting, and the, the meeting will then be adjourned with a, a quorum of council. So we do need people to come back to this, um, once we're done with the executive session. And I would propose 30 minutes. We can always extend if necessary for the executive session.
Okay, so, um, but, so we're not even adjourning this meeting?
Not yet.
It continues on.
Correct.
No, there's a, a, a break into a whole different go-to. Okay. So we're all gonna go look to find a go-to that was sent to us at noon, which is separate than this one, and then we go back to this link to get back into this meeting when we conclude that.
Yes.
Okay, and, um, yes, council member Markley.
Um, yes, I would just like to request a five-minute recess in between if possible.
Sure, sure. So we have like, uh, 4:58, so say 5:05, does that work for everyone?
And then we'll do 30 minutes from there, so to 5:35, and then we can extend if necessary.
Okay, any other, everyone got that? Any other questions?
Yes.
Mayor, I was just noting, I think the original email for the executive session was sent at about 10:36. Hey, um, could somebody confirm that, Josh? I, uh, you mentioned, but I think it was around 10:36.
It's gonna be great when we can do another room sometime.
So can we, we go now?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The executive session will be extended for another 10 minutes. It is now 5:37 and it should be concluded by 5:47. Thank you. Council, our attorney Daniel Kenny came into regular session and asked for another extension of 10 minutes. It is now 5:46, so the meeting will continue to, let's say, 6 o'clock. The city attorney just returned into regular session at 5:57 PM and it extended the meeting for another five minutes. The meeting will now be extended to 6:04 approximately. Thank you.
Uh, we're done with the executive session and we're back into our, our, uh, study session. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Everyone.